This meeting of the Person County Board of County Commissioners is called to order. Let's pray.
Lord, we come to you this day to thank you for all the blessings that you've given us. We'd ask that you watch over this board, guide us, help us, direct us to make the right decisions for the county, for the taxpayers, and for the people who have business before us. We'd ask that you watch over all of our troops that are here at home and in foreign lands. Watch over our first responders and our police officers. Be with them, lead them with a guiding hand. Amen.
Please stand, please, and face the flag and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, you have the agenda before you. Is there any discussion or adjustment of the agenda as it's written? Hearing none, not except, move for approval. All in favor? Is there any discussion? All in favor, please, by say aye. All opposed? Agenda set. At this time, we have an informal comment period. We have four people who have printed their name down to speak. The first one would be Bobby Gray. State your name and address, please.
I'm Bobby Gray, and I live at thirty-two seventy-six McGeesmead Road. This is right across the road from where you're going to the Highco Power Plant. I'm here tonight to talk about coal ashwater with Duke and the surrounding area in Highco. I'm not familiar with the Mayo plant, but back in December, Duke Energy just said it was ninety-one households, one school, and one business in the Highco area that were affected by the coal ashwater. Now, I know this is probably not a county commissioner's problem, it's a Duke problem, and they're trying to, what they're wanting to do is give people filtration system for water for a long time, and we're asking for city water. We're asking for a permanent water solution instead of a filtration system. And I think, in the long run, the citizens out on McGeesmead Road, Concord Shepherd Road would be, and even the school like that, would be in a better situation if we got city water. We know we're getting good quality of water. My understanding, and I went to the meeting in Mayo about the filtration system down there, and they had a standard, but they couldn't tell me what the standard was of what they'd be meeting. You know, they said, well, it'd be pretty close to what the state is, you know. I had, at the time when this was going on, I was out of a boundary of what Duke Energy called a half-mile boundary. So, I went, I paid to have my water checked through the county and out of Raleigh, and there was five items on there above the state level, you know. I'm not saying this is coming from Duke Energy, by no means, but hey, the guy in Raleigh, he advised me, do not drink this water. Since that time, I had the meeting at Mayo with the people down there, they extended this boundary at the time, this was about two months ago. They extended the boundary, and then I was at the point where I was able to get bottled water from Duke. So, I've got bottled water from Duke three times, and I think they've been distributing it for, I really don't know, I think it's probably been six, eight months, I'm not really sure about that. But what I'm, my concern is, if Duke will try to get with the county and propose to try to get city water run out of that area, I would ask for y'all's support to help us. We don't know what Duke's final plans are yet, they hadn't told us, you know. I think sometimes in the near future, we're gonna have another meeting with it, but if something come up, I would, I think the people in Person County, especially the McGeesmead area, like I said, ninety-one households, you know, except hey, we'd need all the help we can get. Thank you.
Thank you. Martin Remmer.
Martin Remmer, I live at twelve thousand sixty-eight Hurdle Mills Road in Hurdle Mills, North Carolina. I'd like to thank y'all for y'all's time. This is a follow-up on the January twelfth meeting on the Chiefs Association where the volunteer departments requested a proposed budget for this year on being able to apply for the state grant items, which will be coming up on May fifteenth. We have not heard anything yet, so I just wanted to emphasize that we needed a proposed contract to look at for that. And then also, I was gonna give an open invitation to any commissioner that would like to attend the meeting this Thursday night at CFO at seven o'clock for the Chiefs Association. So, are there any comments on the proposed contract right now, or are y'all still working on that?
We've never gotten it out that early. Is this something new?
It's something we requested on the January twelfth meeting due to the possible funding increases. We needed to know what our new contract could possibly be so we could base our purchases for the grant items.
So, in other words, if they got an increase, they would not qualify for the fifty-fifty grant, then you need to know what grant to apply for, is that what you're asking?
That would take effect, and then also whether or not the contract is gonna be in place and agreed upon by that time, because if we do not have a contract in place, then we default with the state, and we will lose that grant. So then we'll be responsible for the full amount of the grant, which could be up to sixty thousand dollars, which means we would have to come up with another thirty thousand if we're out of contract.
Your contract date wouldn't suffice through June thirtieth?
No, because our date would be out July first. If we don't have a signed contract, then we're out of compliance with the state.
Then you'd have one by July first.
If we agree upon the contract that y'all are proposing to us.
What was the date of that meeting?
The date of the meeting for CFO or for the state contract, I apologize, I didn't understand what you were saying. The CFO meeting is this Thursday night at seven. And then everyone will be announced May fifteenth of this month for whether or not you were awarded the grant, state grant. Any other questions?
We'd have to rely on you, Paul. We would have to rely on you for that type guidance, wouldn't you?
Well, the budget by law is not to have to be adopted by the county commissioners till June thirtieth, till an official vote of the board is taken. So, unless you wanted to do the volunteer fire department funding separate from all other funding, we would not be able to reach that deadline. We've never had that issue in the past.
Did that change from last year?
No. The reason why we're requesting is because of the increase. So, we're trying to find out what money we have to work with, whether or not we're gonna apply to state grant or other items. It all plays in together.
And I'll get into some of that in item four, if you're gonna hang around.
So, the bare minimum, we would need something for a proposed contract at what we're currently getting now, and then a possibly proposal on expanding our funds, as we've discussed in the past. So, because right now, we don't have anything to look yet. Last year, it was given to us five days prior to January first, so we only had five days to review.
July first?
Yeah, I mean July first, I'm sorry.
That's why we did, went to a two-year contract proposal before, so this issue wasn't so time-sensitive, and then the Chiefs Association asked us to adjust it every year, so I'm not sure, you know, which one y'all prefer. Our budget cycle does take us through the end of June before.
Right, and that's where we get conflicts with the state because of the time, so.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sandra, and I apologize, I can't read.
Majors.
Majors, okay.
My name is Sandra Majors, and I live at forty-seven-two McGeesmead Road, and actually, the first gentleman that came up discussed some of the same concerns that I have. I too am from that area, and we, I along with, I think about four other people from our community came in to a meeting here in October to express our concerns. So, from that point, what we've been offered, as the first gentleman said, was that Duke is offering, they've sent us letters offering the water filtration system. So, I'd like to add to his comments by saying that, from our understanding, the Rock, Mayo, and there's another location, Booys Creek, are the only ones that they're just proposing water filtration systems to. But all the other ten, seven locations in North Carolina, they're offering the municipal water supply line. And so, we too feel that we're just as important as the other candidates and customers, and feel like we should be offered that same thing. Now, when they had a, they had an open meeting down at the Mayo, Mayo location, and they had representatives there, this was, I think, in February, and some of their representatives even mentioned during that open event was that the city of Roxboro was unable to, make the comment, they were unable to offer the water lines to our location. So, I'm not sure what happens with all of that, but like I said, we're just concerned that we would, we do not want the water filtration systems. They've told us that they have not even been state-approved to take care of the problem that's there, but they couldn't give us any information to, as to what it would take care of. But that was what they were just offering, only that. And so, we feel like if it's not guaranteed to take care of the problem, it's a waste of money. So, that's, just wanted to add to his comments that we are very concerned in our community.
Thank you, Ms. Majors.
And we're just asking for your support.
Christopher Crawle.
My name is Christopher Crawley. I'm sitting at forty-nine-four McGeesmead Road. I've been at that location practically all my life. I was born and raised at McGeesmead. My concerns is what the first gentleman said, and that was my sister just about back up here. We stay in the same community. Now, I was up here in October, and Duke Energy had promised this and that, and just given us the runaround. We gets a lot of saying that the water, you can't drink it, some you can drink it, and we all are confused in the community right now because of Duke Energy. You know, we thought we had our wells dug, and we thought we would live there, not have to pay for water. But now, we in a situation that the water is bad, and the property is not valued, you know, if we try to sell it, you know, get nothing for it, because the people know we have a water situation out there. And then Duke Energy saying, well, if you sell the apartment, don't come up to your value, they would have the cost, you know, so you won't lose any money. But, you know, when you go on hearsay, you know how far that goes. So, and then we go to the meetings, they offering you water solution, that they're gonna put a filtration system in, they were gonna keep it up, it's gonna cost something like fifteen, twenty thousand dollars, but we don't want that, because that water filtration system is not gonna take out everything it needs to take out the water. We still be in the same spot we is now, ten years down the road, or twenty years down the road. But, we want the municipal water system from the Roxboro to run water from the city of Roxboro. We feel like that's be our best way out, and the property value won't go down. And then I hear that they won't run the city water because there's not enough people's on the line to keep the water filtered, or something, it's something by the chemicals in it. In the meantime, the power plant is out there, and you got certain team down the road, that that's another plant, if they hook up to the water system, you have enough water going through the pipeline. But, all we want is the county to stand behind us if they will. We need their help. So, you know, it's, it's bad, but, you know, we got everything going on now, and if we don't know ten years down the road, someone else moving in the community, you can't be houses out there because the water is bad. But if we had that pipeline out there, we won't have to worry about that situation. Everything will be solved. So, we just asking for you all's help, just help us out in this situation. Stand behind us as we go forward. Thank you.
Item number one, any discussion or adjustments of the consent agenda?
Move for approval.
There's been a motion made. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, please vote by saying aye. All opposed? Item number two, second reading to consider adoption for the application of solid waste disposal franchise ordinance for the Upper Piedmont Regional Landfill owned and operated by Republic Services of North Carolina. Gentlemen, would you want to just go over the motion that we had earlier rather than going through all of the other? So, Madam Clerk, if you were, the lawyer would read what the motion was, I think it was part of doing a two-year extension on the franchise and a one-year contract with Republic.
The board considered the application at the first reading at its April seventeenth meeting. By unanimous vote, the board approved a motion to extend the franchise agreement with Republic Industries for a period of not more than two years, maintaining the current per-day tonnage rate, and for county staff to submit options for closure of the landfill during this period, and to, and that to include proper procedures, legal requirements, cost of implementing each option for consideration by the board.
Any discussion?
Move for approval.
Motion's on the table. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item number three, Person County Juvenile Crime Prevention Council funding, recommendations for fiscal year 2017, 2018. Mr. Carter.
Good evening, Commissioners, County Manager. Just appreciate y'all having this item on. I'm David Carter, and I'm also the chairperson, I'm chairperson of the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, and I'm also a chief court counselor for the Juvenile Justice Office. And so, each year within our JCPC, we do a risk and needs assessment, and we look at the risk and needs of the juveniles within our office. I have juvenile court counselors that conduct assessments on each child that comes into our office that's charged with undisciplined delinquent complaints. And what you have before you in the packet is the actual risk assessment and needs assessment summaries that show the percentage of youth and the risk factors of those youth that came through our fiscal year 2015, 2016. I'm not gonna go through every item just based on time, but I will just indicate that, you know, we have eighty-five youth that come through our intake system when they're being processed for their complaints that they've gotten in the community, and those youth, eighty-five percent of them are at a high-risk level reoffending, and thirty-nine percent had prior referrals to juvenile court. Twenty-seven percent of those youth reported that they had a prior assault history. Eighty-five percent of them were reported to have moderate or serious school behavior problems. Eighty-one percent of them either lacked pro-social peer interactions. Seven percent reported to be gang-involved or associating with a gang. And thirty-eight percent of those youth had parents willing but unable to supervise, so the parents were having issues supervising those youth. And then we looked at the needs assessment data, and within the needs assessment data on the second page, there were eighty-two percent of the youth at intake that were associating with other delinquent peers, and they were rejected by positive peers. Eighty-one percent of them had moderate to serious school behaviors. Seventeen percent of them were functioning below their grade level. Forty percent reported abuse and neglect histories. Forty-eight percent of them reported to need more mental health assessments. Sixty-six percent reported to have domestic violence or domestic discord in the home. Eighty percent had come from families where a parent had marginal supervision skills, and sixty-two percent of those came from families where at least one family member had a past history or current involvement with the justice system. So, we looked at the committee, the Risk and Needs Committee, is a subcommittee of JCPC, so we looked at what we currently had in the county and the other community resources that were available to juvenile court counselors and the juvenile justice system. We also looked at our gaps and our barriers currently within the system within Person County and the needed services. So, if you go to the third page, we prioritize our services that we truly needed for Person County. And I'll say this, we get, the county gets a hundred and twenty-three thousand, two-hundred-and-thirteen dollars every year from the Department of Juvenile Justice, and y'all have been so kind in previous years to match that, and I believe it's a ten percent match, I believe it is?
Twenty percent.
Or twenty percent, okay. So, within the priority funding, we prioritize community service and restitution as number one. Teen court, number two. Parenting skill-building services is number three. Mentoring and/or interpersonal skill-building services to address those youth that said that they had negative peer associations. And number five, we ranked the very last priority, is emergency shelter and relative services. So, if you see on the fourth and last document that you have in your packet, the Person County JCPC at our last meeting in April voted based on program proposals that we had received, and the funding allocation grid here that you see on that last document shows the programs that JCPC recommended to be funded. The Yes Community Service Program, that is through the cooperative extension service here. The JCPC allocated amount of dollars recommended is fifty-two thousand seven eighty-one. The Roots and Wings Parenting Component, twelve thousand dollars of JCPC dollars. Roots and Wings Interpersonal Skill Building, twenty-six thousand eight fifty-eight. The Roots and Wings Teen Court Program, eighteen thousand seven ninety-two. The Sheriff's Grade Camp, which is a summer school component that they offer, six thousand six sixty-seven. And we have administrative funding to fund a administrative support person for the JCPC, and also we have administrative dollars that we award for supplies, and then if we have any unspent amount, we also use that for sponsorships of like camp, like we have done in the past, so that's six thousand one hundred fifteen dollars. And then you can see the county cash match that we're requesting for those programs. We are, this is our recommendation before you to go into our next fiscal year to allow these programs to serve the youth of Person County.
Dave, what makes your intake? Is it school, is it school centipede that y'all report, or what?
We have, based on our statistics last year, we have about eighty percent of our complaints come from the school system, and then the other twenty percent are coming from law enforcement or citizens bringing the complaints to us.
What, give me an example of moderate school behavior.
Within our assessment tool, if, if the child has had previous suspensions at the school, or they have an expulsion history, that will give them that moderate level of school, that's what they consider the moderate level.
Forty-eight percent that needed more mental health assessment, did they get it?
Yeah, we, what we do is, we have a network of providers here locally within Person County. We have Freedom House, we have Youth Villages, we have Amethyst, we've got securing resources for consumers, and that is our network that we use. And we have another assessment tool that, we don't have the statistics for you today, but there's another assessment tool called the Gain Short Screen, and that is a substance abuse and mental health assessment tool that we use to screen these juveniles. And if they are at a three or higher assessment point, where they've got histories of some mental health flags, if you will, or substance abuse, prior substance abuse use, it will put them in that three category where we refer the child to one of our network providers, and then they get an assessment.
What's the age range of your youth?
Well, we serve kids between six and currently sixteen years of age with criminal complaints. Now, there are juveniles that fall within the undisciplined category. Now, there are juveniles that fall within the undisciplined category, which is called a status offense, between six and eighteen. Now, most of the youth that we see coming through our system are ranging from ten to sixteen years of age.
These statewide contractual services, these are for the level-two youth?
Yes.
I bet all these are out of county?
Yes, they are, except for AMI Kids is a functional family therapy service that was through a grant through the General Assembly. And those kids through AMI, with AMI, they get serviced locally. It's more of an intensive model for youth and families where they-
They go to these facilities, are they housed there, or are they go there for treatment and come back here? Or are they in DSS custody, or they were parents?
The three, the top three that you see there, Eckerd, West Care, and Dillon Crisis and Assessment Center, those are residential facilities that they go to. And different timeframes for those different programs. Some range four months to six months timeframe.
Our grade programs, they see kids at middle school?
They do.
Is there a percentage of those kids that actually attend that and then later on use their service by you?
They previously have not had the, they've not gotten the actual funding, like program funding for JCPC. We have given them some sponsorships within the last two to three years where they've sponsored kids to go. So this year will be their first year that they've gotten, if-
I thought they received funds years ago before y'all got somewhat of a cut from the state, didn't you?
As far as JCPC programming, to my knowledge, they've not gotten the actual award, or they've not proposed, they've not made a proposal until this year, an official proposal. So when the programs make a proposal to JCPC and they're awarded those funds, then they are required to track all those kids that they have in the program through an NCILIS computer system, which does all the statistical data.
Out of the five that'll be awarded funds, did you have overspending application for grant applications?
We had, Roots and Wings had asked for funding for the community service, but that was the only competitive situation that we had.
Right. So Roots and Wings had applied for community service and restitution along with their interpersonal skills and parenting and teen court. The JCPC board voted to keep community service and restitution with the Cooperative Extension Program.
I'd be interested to see who goes to that grade camp and if they're later. I mean, if that's truly a preventative, to keep them out. I'd be interested to see whether I get sixty-two percent of the children that you serve that come from family that were in the household that's had some type of current involvement with the justice system. I'd like to know how much of that is substance abuse.
We certainly can get the grade program to provide us statistical information when they conclude their summer camp program.
Good question, Mr. Jefferson. Anybody else?
For approval?
There's a motion on the table to approve. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of matched grants for funding, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed? Carries. Thank you, Dave.
Thank y'all so much.
And item number four, fiscal year 2017-2018, budget preliminary discussion. Commissioner Jeffers?
Yeah, I have a question. On four-twenty-one, we received our weekly email from the manager, and she stated she had balanced her budget and showed that she had not, she did not have a support for a tax increase. And I was just wondering, where did that decision, how did she come up with that decision? Since the last time we met discussing budgetary issues was at our board retreat. And when we left there, we did a survey, and that day at the survey, we had three willing to increase taxes to support public safety. And I'm just wondering, when did that change from February to now? And that's kind of really setting a precedent that we really hadn't hit before. I know since I've been on the board, and I'm serving in my ninth year now, that the manager works for the board, and we had three that said, do this. And so I'm expecting, when we get our proposed budget at the next meeting, I'm expecting a budget to show a tax increase to support public safety, but now we're not. And I know we hadn't had any budget work sessions, we haven't had any discussions to base that decision on. And so I'm just wondering, are we setting a new precedent, are we meeting with the manager, or where's this coming from? I've got volunteer fire departments that are brought to the meeting here several times, brought to the retreat. We know our issues and our needs at EMS for public safety. We argue that as much as we campaigned on economic development, that our number-one job up here is public safety. And we're right now, we have a need for public safety in Person County. We have not raised taxes in ten years. We're cut to the bone. I don't know where we would get it from. And I think at that time, we were proposing at least something that was nine or two cents. We just earlier did what we did with the landfill, that if that goes through, that would go away, that's five-hundred thousand dollars. I mean, where is this, where is all this money gonna come from?
I'd like to start out by saying that in your opening statement, you indicated that we were not funding security, but we are. And one of the things that I discussed during the February retreat with you was that we had gotten together with the Chiefs Association and discussed a mutually agreed-upon formula the first year that I sat on the board and did a budget. And during that year, we gave an increase. And the following year, which would have been last year, we were supposed to skip any increase in budget. And then this year, we were supposed to do another two percent increase. And part of that was, what we had discussed earlier, was that the Chiefs Association needed to know what monies that they had available, what they were gonna have, so that they could do their proposals and do their grants. And so originally, two years ago, when that budget was approved, that was part of the reason for doing it that way, is this is how much you're getting this year. You won't get an increase next year, but in this budget year, you get a two percent increase. And so, that was the reason that was done. Now, as far as the vote on public safety in three to two, it was a private vote, so I can't speak to who voted which way and why it changed. But from my understanding is, our county manager went back and talked to the board members individually and felt that there wasn't a strong enough three-to-vote to do the increase that was discussed during the retreat session. And that's all I know about.
The only issue I have with that is, this is a public board. I mean, that's just the way it is. People may be tired of the four-one-three-two votes, but we're not all elected to agree on the same thing. We all have different values and why we think we're up here. But my question is process. The manager works for the five of us. It takes three of us to hire three of us to get rid of her. It takes three of us to help her to do something in that office. And my understanding, when we left in February, we told her to do something. And that has since changed, but I don't know how, because this is, like you said, a public board. Now, that survey monkey we took, obviously was private. But in my opinion, if anything would have changed, it should not have changed until we had a budget work session, when it could have been discussed, and either a public consensus was made or actual vote was taken.
Right.
So that's, that's my concern. You've been on, you've had more budgets to deal with than I have, but I'm in my ninth one, and that's the way it's been done for nine years.
Well, and I've seen people change their minds, as have you have, and I think-
You can, but you should be, you should do it here.
Well, I think-
Not in there.
I think any commissioner has the ability to change their mind. And I believe, I read something in the paper, I can't speculate the exact issue of the Courier-Times, but one member of the board stated that they was just looking at options and trying to gather more information on it before he can come to a decision, especially a new commissioner. And so, if you're looking at, say this, by the landfill, we're keeping, that was an anonymous vote, and that was to explore the options. Okay?
Yeah, I tell everybody, it's not a bad deal. Keep competitive.
And so, for the, and for this, any commissioner has the right to change their mind if they decide on something that after speaking with the county manager or speaking with members of the public.
You're absolutely right. It should be done in a public setting.
Well, I don't know how more public, I don't know, I don't know how more public you can get than putting it in the paper and making people aware of it.
No decision should be made at that office. Decision should be made here or at an announced public meeting.
Well, I agree with that.
This model was elected here.
I've seen decisions made in that office too.
But you owe it to the citizens that elected you to say yea or nay.
And I've seen county commissioners only copy three people and stuff too.
Yeah, I've been on the board nine, Jimmy obviously got us all. And I've been on the board longer than Tracy and longer than Gordon. But all of you gentlemen have been around long enough. Gordon may be the new person on the board, but he served twelve years on school.
Well, let me say something too there. You're talking about a vote here and a vote there and a vote someplace else. But in my first rodeo with your straw poll, instructions by the county manager was, or said, that this is a informal, non-binding straw poll. So there's no vote. At that point, there's no vote at all. And two days later in the paper, I made the comment to Mr. Wilcox that I was not in favor of the tax increase, two days later. So I don't know, I don't know if any decisions made here, I haven't made a decision. I mean, I've shared opinions, but opinions aren't a vote. So I don't know.
Well, I would think that before that, before our managers give a direction, that the three of us that give her the direction would be willing enough to do it so in the budget. And that's, that's my concern. I've never experienced, I've never left in nine years a budget retreat where we gave our premises to the manager to prepare a budget. And then somewhere between there and when that budget was presented, it had changed from what we told her at the beginning. Now, sure, numbers move, but not values, decisions, a goals of this year's budget. And so, that's the problem I have. That's the difference that I've seen in nine years. And I wanted to put it out there.
Your argument's been noted. Any other discussion?
So, given what Mr. Remmer said earlier, I guess since we had already agreed prior on a year-to-year contractual agreement, and we had somewhat of a, we would give the city an increase this year and the volunteers the following year. So I guess if they plan for anything right now, they could at least hope for maybe a two percent increase is what we had previously agreed upon some years back. Would that be?
That is a recommendation I could make to the board?
Something that they could think about as they're preparing their budgets as far as what grants they're gonna apply, because they don't need to miss out on these grants because obviously they're not gonna get any help from us. So they need to get all the help they can from the state. Public safety is, like I said, should be one of our number-one issues. And I know when I call them, I sure hope they come, and I hope they have what they need on their trust to come. And I hope they have the meaning and they're equipped to do the job safely. So, Chair, if you'd like, do I?
I would, I would just say that that's what I would do is plan on what decision has been made and voted on in the past, and that was the decision two years ago to do an increase that year. And we were supposed to have skipped the last year, although there was an increase last year. And then two percent this year. So if I were making planning decisions, then I would plan two percent. Any other discussion? Thank you. At this time, the chairman has no report. What about the manager?
If we have, if more than three of you, or three of you are planning to attend the Fire Chiefs meeting on Thursday, that Chief Remmer has extended an invitation to, please let Brenda know so that we can announce that as a quorum. I know that Commissioner Jeffers will be there. Any other commissioners planning to attend so that we can duly advertise that if needed? Okay. And then, reminder of the reception for the new superintendent is on Wednesday from five to six-thirty in the auditorium. And that's all I had.
All right. I attended Wednesday the program for the first high school for their Person County Scholars and O'Connell Scholars. And I just wanted to wish them all the best as they prepare to graduate high school and go on. I hope they go off and do great things and come back to Person County sooner than later. And then I also would like to ask at our next meeting if we can, if we can have under my name a resolution of support for a water extension, municipal water extension, permanent water supply. And I would like that, if approved by this board, to be sent to the governor, to our senator, to our representative, to our city council members, and to the-
Thank you, Christian.
One thing I want to go ahead, since you mentioned the water thing. I support that as well, and I think that we ought to support him. If there's any way they can get city water, some type of filter system, the city water would be much preferable. I worked in environmental health a long time, and if they can get a permanent solution, that'd be better off. I, you know, I don't know what the difference in the cost is, but I think it could be worked out with the City of Roxboro. Some of the problems that we're talking about, I understand just from listening. You've got ninety-one residents, depends on the size of the water line you run. Sometimes you have problems with water standing in the lines and different things, and different chemicals. And like you said, if they did run it to one of those plants out there like certain, or actually the power plant accepting, might have enough water, usually did, it would take care of that problem. And I know there's lots of places they have to run water out of fire hydrants, because it can't stay in that line, but so long, do it starts having problems with the chlorine and other chemicals. But the City of Roxboro's got water, and I know they would like to sell water. And if there's any way it could be worked out for them to get it, I would support that. Also, would like to say I just request some information on the cost of reopening the transfer station down at the old landfill and refurbishing the scale house and getting some type of a price on what it would cost if you hauled part of the garbage to, or solid waste to Grahamville County versus somebody having, hauling their own over there. And my vision for this, some of you I think are aware of this, is that I would think if we opened the transfer station, we would charge more than Grahamville's willing to charge, and they would be somewhere under forty dollars, which my understanding now, the city has got a contract with this landfill here for cheaper than what other people can haul it down that way. Landfills are willing to do contracts, but let's just say if Grahamville was thirty-six or thirty-eight dollars a ton and you wanted to carry it down there, you could do that. If you wanted to carry, I hit our transfer station for fifty dollars a ton, then you could do that. But if you got a small amount, it would cost you less. We need some information on that. I don't want us to let this lay here and linger. We've got two years in government. Mr. Powell said the other week, doesn't work so fast. So I think we need to look at that, look into that. And at the meeting, this is my talking session, so, you know, it's not appropriate for me to make a motion for that, but I think that needs to be put on an agenda and looked at somewhere soon.
So you have a memo from the consultants that you hired, excuse me, that outlined those options with the budget?
The best I can read from the consultants, they were looking at a transfer station, a new transfer station being operated by an entity, and they were looking at a number of seven-hundred and something thousand dollars. And I just have no idea that there would be any kind of a figure like that to reopen the one down at the old landfill when you've already got a chute down and a transfer station, and it might not be enlarged, and you've already got a set of scales at work. If you didn't have that, I can see where you start getting into big bucks. But you've got a set of scales that you can drive a tractor-trailer across tonight and weigh it. I mean, the scales work. The house probably needs to be refurbished and the building, the houses that probably need some work on it. But the scales are out. And the tran, the chute that you dumped the garbage in the trucks there. So, you know, we've got something there, but I, and they looked at. My understanding was that in the report, they looked at a transfer station or a convenience site completely from the ground up. They were not looking at something that we already had part of. We've got the basics out. I mean, you know, it's kind of like building a house, but you already got the structure there. there, you're going to put the siding on and the inside, so we need to know that. What would it cost?
So, we can resurrect that and look a little deeper at the details of that memo. There was a PowerPoint presentation you were giving in 2015, of December 2015, and then an updated memo that we looked at in January. So, if you'd like, I can place this-
Did they look at that old landfill?
I believe that they did. That was, yes.
I'll go back and look at it, but I didn't understand that that's where they were getting their numbers from.
So, that has been a closed session. I, are we ready to release that?
Maybe we can get a set of numbers.
Go back to the city?
Anyway, that's just my comment for tonight.
We have those numbers, and I will get them on an upcoming agenda for you all to look at again.
Kyle, I'll skip you and get Gordon to get something that he wanted to say, so.
Well, well, no, maybe, maybe I did, maybe I didn't. I'm a little confused, because part of the motion, the original motion, didn't include language that would answer Mr. Clayton's question. I mean-
Your original motion included to look at the various options and bring them back, and we said that we had that data available from the consultants that you hired, and after tonight's decision, that yes, we could put that on an upcoming agenda.
Go ahead, Kyle.
Also, if it's at the pleasure of the board, I would like the manager to talk to, reach out to the private waste providers for the residents of this county. The people of this county need to know what type of impact they're facing with increased fees for any changes if the landfill goes away. I've spoken to a couple of them, and they were, this really wasn't even on their radar, and they were kind of caught off guard and, and more or less kind of shocked that the county was pursuing that. But including the city of Roxboro, what impact this is going to have on their trash pickup and what, what challenges that this would face, so. And to have that feedback, because the people of this county need to know, if they use those services, they need to know what impact this is going to affect them.
Sure. You'll recall that we did reach out to all three entities, and the private haulers were not willing at the time.
Well, I think they may be a little bit more willing, because they-
Oh, give it a second, Gordon.
I think it was, they didn't think it was ever going to happen, so. Thank you.
Gordon, anything else?
No.
Any other discussion? I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, man.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?